Good morning. I'm going to call this September 8th, 2021 Hancock County Commissioners' regular meeting in order. Gentlemen, I direct your attention to the agenda and ask if there's any adjustments.
I'm going to move to approve the amended agenda as presented with the exception of removing a known tax abating matter.
Second discussion on the motion. Hearing now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll move to public comment. Is there anybody else here this morning who would like to make a public comment?
Yes, I would.
I'm sorry, we have a gentleman at the podium. If you just hold.
I'm sorry.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning. Glenn Mosher here. And again, be very brief. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to come in this morning based on the agenda item for the hazard duty pay. It was spoken last meeting. And I just wanted to reiterate my point that I am in complete support of hazard duty pay for first responders. And I just ask that the commission consider the precedent that's being set throughout the county and that you consider extending that that offer out to communities throughout Hancock County. Unless you have any questions for me, keep my remarks brief.
We welcome your comments when we get to the agenda, right, Glenn?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wannless, you have three minutes.
Okay. Sorry, I'm trying. It's a written comment and I'm trying to find it. So this is citizen input to Hancock County Board of Commissioners' meeting by Hendrick D. Gideon's. And it's to be presented on his behalf by me, Rebecca Wentworth. So Hendrick starts by thanking me, Becky Wentworth, for agreeing to Zoom in his place while he's in South Portland at a morning post-op medical appointment. And he addresses two matters. First, Hancock County is to receive $10 million over the next two years to help turn the tide on the pandemic, address its economic fallout, and lay the foundation for a strong and equitable recovery. That money was appropriated to support urgent COVID-19 responses, replace lost revenue, strengthen vital public services, support economic stabilization, and address systemic public health and economic challenges contributing to unequal impacts of the pandemic. That money is not just to support county government and its employees. It is to enhance the health and well-being of the county's citizens and economy, a huge opportunity for you, but an equally large challenge to your responsibilities as county leaders. I recommend to your attention a substantial August 16th Press Herald article exploring a number of issues associated with this process in which our community is now currently involved. Let me speak to just one of the Press Herald's article addresses. In a pandemic, keeping on keeping on at all is hazardous duty for every citizen, parents, and police clerks, clerics, electricians, emergency responders, food shoppers, and firefighters, every citizen, not just public servants. Keep in mind, too, that we're all very much in the middle of this pandemic and more than likely to have at least another year to go. But think big for the county. Don't just settle for the obvious. And service all, not just county employees. Look to the future with these recovery resources, not just the immediate past. Second point, I would ask you to reflect on how hard it is for those of who take time to prepare and yet keep coming back here to offer counsel. Review of your meeting agendas and records offer little evidence that our three-minute stints before you impact your thoughts, deliberations, or decisions. That's a hard judgment to come to. But it is not convincing that our public comments and questions have any impact. What might you or we do differently to address this apparent gap? And to 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 support Mosher's statement in that it would be important, and this is me speaking now, Rebecca Wentworth, to to bring together all the leaders of the towns in some way. I would like to see some evidence that that has happened, that everybody has had input in how to spend this money. Okay. And on that note, have a good day, gentlemen, and thank you very much for your time and your effort.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Lassada, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sula Sard, and I'm the town manager for the town of Bucksport. I guess this is the person of the agenda where we were. I wrote you folks a letter yesterday in regard to the hazard duty pay, which, as indicated in the letter, I support the idea of the use of that portion of our funds. And it's a it's an allowed use. I'm not arguing that, and I support that. My concern is that the fine men and women who serve this county don't all work for the county. But they provide law enforcement, EMS, and public safety services that are equally important to this county. And the standard that you've set in this proposal is one that no other community can individually meet because we don't have $10 million in resources through our but we have a much smaller pool. And in terms of
I don't want to interrupt. I don't want to interrupt. But I'm sorry. But I just want you to know that we want to give the public an opportunity to speak during that.
Oh, okay.
And we welcome your comments at that time. If you are speaking now because you don't think you're going to have another chance, I just want to reassure you then that you'll have
I'll simply sit down.
We're not even going to limit you to three minutes.
That's okay.
I didn't mean to discourage you from speaking. I just want you to know that we'll be taking public comment during that agenda writing. Thank you. Is there anybody else this morning who wishes to make a public comment? Hearing none. We'll move on with the agenda. And we're going to open the bids for a couple used cruises. First bid I had this morning is from Chad Collins in Milford. His bid for, and how have these later? Okay, his bid for vehicle number 15 is $3,017.26. His bid for vehicle 16 is $4,517.26.
Sounds like somebody bid on things to war with those numbers.
He's bid on cruisers.
I'm glad to hear that. At least 16 mile car was he did that higher.
The next bid. It looks like his name is Tanner. Last name is Sera, S-E-U-R-A, of Ellsworth. He's bidding only on unit 16 for $10,000. Next bid is from Peter Brown. And his bid is for
Really just get a bid for 10 grand?
It doesn't indicate which cruiser he's bidding on. But it's irrelevant because it's a $1,500 bid and woefully less than what they bid for. So
And it didn't specify which one?
Did not specify which cruiser. The next bid. Who's that from? I have another one for Tanner Surra. And for unit 15, he bids $9,000. I have a bid from Brett Patty, P-A-T-T-I, from Willoughby, Ohio. He bids he bids he says he bids $2,389.15 for each car, or $5,061 as a package on both. So I'm not sure how we
They're both low. Even if you flip them up, they're both way low.
What's that amount?
Yeah.
I think your bid is is, well, it could be as high as 21, as 2,500, $30.50.
Okay. Well, what's the H M I?
Thank you. Sheriff says it's irrelevant to the numbers. Everybody else backed out, it would become relevant. Next bid is Carol Page in Toronto. And he bids $1,605 on either. Interesting bid.
I don't know if he'd qualify for that.
I know. Surprise he wants to roll back in. I have a bid from Patrick Walsh. Unit 15 is $1,500. And he says car 15 and 16, $2,000. Maybe a package, but again, it's irrelevant. Patrick Walsh again. Unit 15 is $2,550. From Motocar in Ellsworth. For unit 16, a bid of $2,175. From Zach Sanchez in Bob Scott. For unit 16, $4,205. John Arbo, Belfast. Unit 15, $3,500. Unit 16 is $4,500. From Taylor Delano in Ellsworth. For unit 15, a bid of $1,506. For unit 16, a bid of Bid from Matthias Updegrath, Trenton. Bid on unit 15, $300. A bid from Angela Morse. On unit 15, $2,500. Bid from Henry Bauer, Trenton. Bid of on unit 15, $4,100. Another bid from Henry Bauer. On unit 16, $5,100. That concludes all the bids that we have received. I'm going to ask that the sheriff take these, contact the highest bidders, confirm that they're still interested and they want to make the purchase. He's going to come back to us hopefully sooner than later, and then we will approve the sale.
We're going to go into executive session at 10:00 still. That's on the agenda.
Yes.
So I'll come back around 10:00.
You're fine. Yes, you can be fine. Thank you.
Yes, Chandler. I received word from legal over here by cell. Are you going to be here by cell for that discussion?
Okay. So as far as the agenda is concerned, folks, we are going to executive session at 10 o'clock to discuss employee matter. Moving on. Minutes. We skipped the minutes, didn't we?
Yeah.
I'm going to go back to item two. Motion in order to approve the last meeting's minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the August 7th special meeting as presented.
Second edition. Discussion. Hearing now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now we will move to item four.
Item three.
I just did three. I'm opening. So now we'll move to four.
Wasn't there a recognition?
What minutes do you have? Doesn't sound like you have current minutes.
Do you have
Oh, yeah.
There was an amended agenda.
Okay.
I had this one in word. That's what that's correct. Sorry. Should we wait till we bring up the agenda? No. Move ahead. Yeah. We want to go down through the recipients of the grant program. I have to prove and verify. Do you know if I need people?
Kitty did. Barbie did, yes. She's not here this morning. I'm looking at some unfamiliar faces I see. So
I'm just curious. And I'm out here. I'm just curious what she told them. Because we don't know, do we?
She told me 9:00.
9:00?
Yeah.
I'm going to wait. And if it's okay, folks, I'm going to wait until 9:00 to be sure that we have as many people here that have been invited. So let's move on to 4B and talk about hazard pay for the employees. The agenda items listed as approving the list, that list is a list prepared by Scott on which county employees qualify for the hazard pay and the amounts for which they qualify. And I want to, before we approve this list, I want to open it up publicly for comment as to this program hazard pay in general and specifically to Hancock County. So I welcome back Ms. Lassada, if you'd like to come back and make your full comments.
I've used up a minute, or three minutes.
There's no timeline with this. There's no timeline with the
You can deliver it, yeah.
I'll agree. As I said, the objection isn't that that hazard pay is included. Your concern is the level to which this is and the inclusion of non frontline. People weren't up in the middle of it as much as others in this process. The I'm asking you to take a step back and look overall at public safety services in the county and how they're provided. And those of us who maintain our own departments provide a service to the county as well. But we're also the funding source of the county. Your money, or much of it, comes from what all of us contribute anyway, when we pay our county tax. And someone asked me, you know, said, well, only selling Bucksport has spent its money. And my response is that they were a member of the town of Bucksport, they would have every right to weigh in. And I think that Bucksport is a member of this county. And just I'm asking, I'm not sure why it has to be this soon. I just received a letter from the county asking for input on expenditure of these funds. And today you're voting on expending. And I somewhat feels like the cockerel of the horse because there's not been an engagement with the county in terms of this overall law enforcement look. I just think that all of these men and women are equally important. We don't have the resources because we are not funded at the level of the county or through our funds to do the level that you're doing. And so if the choice is to do that, my request is that you include all of our people and not just county employees. And if that isn't, to take a step back and look at a level that's fundable across the country without using your funds. We could use enough of ours to do that. I'm happy answering questions. I don't come down here and weigh in on much. I couldn't even find this room. But I am. This is an item concerned to my employees. And
Okay, specifically, what employees, what class of employees would you like to include on a countywide basis, with the positions?
Police, EMS, the public safety, the people who were the frontline workers during this. For municipal county, there are many other frontline workers. I would argue that the Hannaford grocery clerks were the most at risk people during this. We're not to that level. But that's a the hazard pay for frontline workers are people who were not behind a plastic guard or behind locked doors or behind. That's hazard. The people who are out in it. And those were the EMS people that served this county and for our agencies were out in this as well. And they're not included at all. So I would say police, EMS, dispatch, other are corrections. My apologies. Corrections definitely would be on that list. But those employees that, from our perspective, are frontline workers who were representing public safety and the county during a pandemic. Those of us who do this work every day, I was an essential worker the day before the pandemic, and I'll be an essential worker the day after, just because I'm the boss. But I wasn't more at risk during it than I ever have been. Well, maybe a little, but not enough to to discuss. And so the the use of funds to the second part was the use of funds for all county employees that are not or full-time ones that are not public safety related because of inequities between union and non-union wages, I don't believe would qualify as anything related to essential workers under our. And that's part of this proposal.
I'm trying to get a handle on how many people we're talking about. So are we talking about dispatches, police dispatches? So that's in addition to the police officers?
Police dispatch EMS. The majority of us in the county are combined departments for fire MS that that's what provides them.
So EMS, how about private EMS organizations such as Northern Light? I mean, would they qualify? Would you suggest they receive the stipend as well?
That if we're talking about public employees is what I'm talking about. And that's what county personnel is. And that's what municipal personnel are, public employees.
So we're not talking about private. So as we try to sit down and compose this list, we're talking about the municipal EMS, right? We're talking about municipal dispatches, municipal police officers. How about firefighters? No?
Firefighter, fire slash EMS are in all agencies participants.
Okay. But how about for a fire department, like a volunteer fire department that doesn't have EMS as part of their component? Would they qualify? Would that be?
I have to look closer at our part to find out that it depends. Those people that were on the front line, if they were out, most have gone with full-time employees or part-time employees that are regular part-time serving over a certain number of hours, you know, not just somebody who showed up once during.
Can't you see the complicity, though, of trying to determine who is eligible, who isn't, simply by who showed up and who didn't? I mean, I, as I look at fire departments, and volunteer is a good example. Let me have a roster of 50 volunteer firemen, 20 of which they haven't seen for years, but they're still on the roster. Then you have this core group that show up at every, every incident and so on. Can't you see, can't you see the complicity of saying to the chief, give me the list of those active people? And can't you see how difficult it would be for him to have to sit down and try to, you know, to compile this list?
I can see how difficult, how complex this whole issue is and where you draw the line over what is hazard and what is not. My concern is the line being drawn is that only county employees of all stripes deserve hazard pay during this, representing the county.
And you've said it several times, but I'm trying to nail down exactly who we're talking about so that we can try to decide, for example, the cost, what would be the cost of providing hazard pay to our extent, to the level of what we're doing county employees for this group that you want, you're advocating for. And so I'm having a problem. As I go online and I look at the statistics, they list full-time police officers in Hancock County, outside the state police and the sheriff's department. Then they list, you call them sworn full-time, sworn part-time, then you have civilian full-time, civilian part-time. I'm not quite sure what that category is. So that is a number, that's the objective number that you can take, sit down and say, okay, if we gave each full-time 5,000, the level we're giving our patrol deputies, and the part-time 2,500, then this is going to cost X amount of dollars. So that's, that's the number that could be driving this conversation. But I can tell you that just trying to figure out what level of hazard pay we want to provide for county employees has caused a myriad of comments and concerns and time-consuming consideration of who gets what. And so I personally am not opposed to taking some of the ARP funds that we got, getting it back to public service providers. But I would like to have somebody out there at least tell us which one of these you think should receive this benefit so that we can sit down and figure out, do we want to appropriate that much money for ARP funds?
If that is information that the commissioners want, I'm certain if you request that from those of us in the county that have the personnel with a time limit on when you want it to pack, that we could provide that.
So
I can't provide it standing here.
Of course not. Yes, I understand. I just, okay, John, the other thing I was just going to say, too, is just that the people that the commission can't all do to, obviously, creating the list of employees and how they're getting paid, it doesn't cut and dry. Full-time persons get 5,000. It's based on how much of that time period they were actually, you know, active. So it's not, I don't want everybody to think these checks are going out kind of willy nilly without a serious amount of analysis in time. Scott has spent trying to look at the employees. The other thing, last meeting, I mentioned, you know, he emphasized that the, the chief said, yes, yeah, county could be open to contributing to the towns. But my thought is a little bit that towns need to contribute too. And I'm not sure to what degree and what the ratio would be, whether it's one to one or one to two. I don't know because of the exact concerns the chair mentioned. To be honest, it's kind of hugely complex trying to figure out who's going to be getting money, who's not. And who is going to add, the person that's going to be added, they didn't get it. And out over there, he had 500 hours more than he, you know, he never worked. It's going to be a sticky point of the whole thing, so.
I'm not sure that the community said they could, would do nothing. Yeah, that wasn't our, our mission. We had talked initially locally about being able to do $1,000 for our full time and 500 for our time because that's consistent with the level of funding that we're receiving under ARPA.
Yeah, yeah. So all I'm saying is I know where they want to look into and to contribute. But to me, it has to be availed from the towns on it as well. Mr. Berry?
For me, just doing math in my head, I'm looking at what the price tag is on this. And, um, you know, just off the cuff, I say that that amount, if we're going to do what you're proposing, do those amounts, and I'm not sure if that's exactly what you're proposing, but do those amounts for all the member towns and, um, the price tag has got to be at least five times that. Okay, minimum, five times what, oh, five times that four, that 400,000. Ostvari, just.
How are you?
So to me.
I'm in the county.
So my, one of my questions is, would you rather see us do nothing? Than do something like this? I mean, I, I, I just am trying to get, you know, a sense of where the communities are. Or specifically your community.
I, I was going to say, I can't speak for any other community than Bucksport. The, the, the size of the numbers is, is that, I wouldn't be standing here if the county had said they were going to do $1,000 for each of their law enforcement. That's what other communities in this county had talked about doing. And when the 5,000 came out, it sort of made our $1,000 look like nothing compared to what the county was doing. And we were doing it for EMS as well as law enforcement.
So, so that clarifies for me. So your, your point is actually that we should be being consistent with the communities participating that way? Not that we shouldn't do it.
Oh, I'm not saying you shouldn't do it. I'm saying that the degree to which you're doing it, it matches anything that communities can do.
Okay, so, um, you know, maybe what would be nice is to learn what, has your council discussed this or taken any action on this?
We, we're still setting policies on this. These funds don't have to be extended for some time. And we're looking at a package that looks at all of it at once. We're, we're not going to be cutting checks to anybody in the next 15 minutes for hazard pay when we haven't determined the total package and what we're going to do with that.
And so chief, I'd ask you, has Ellsworth taken any preliminary plans as to what they're going to do with ARP funds?
Uh, so we, we're gathering information from, from different department heads and from community members as to what, uh, you know, what potential spending, uh, for these ARPA funds. But, you know, I would also urge, urge the commission to, to understand the current state. And I mean, we're not out of this pandemic. So, you know, the expenditure of these funds, uh, which the state, we haven't even gotten yet, um, you know, allocated to the, to municipalities, um, is, is somewhat premature to be determining how we're going to spend our funds at this point when we're not sure what the next, you know, two weeks, six months is going to bring to our communities as far as continued suffering. So, um, so yeah, so we have begun the process to discuss potential expenditures. But the reality until, until I think anyone can be more confident that, uh, we're not likely to see additional restrictions, more closures, more shutdowns. Uh, you know, no one can really say, you know, how we're going to spend the funds because we don't know when the, the suffering is going to end. So that would be one, that, that would be my answer to that question. Um, but another proposal I would, I would recommend is the same formulas that are being applied to the, to the municipal, I mean, to, excuse me, to the county employees by Mr. Atkins can, you know, can easily be transferred over to the municipal employees. And if we're provided with the, uh, the structure in which the decisions were made to expend these funds to county employees, we can apply those same, you know, those same thought processes, those same, uh, dimensions to our employees and then provide the county with a potential list of, of, uh, for, for your approval, just like you're, you know, just like you're going over.
So what positions would you be suggesting, Glenn? Do you have some idea what, what positions?
My, my argument has always been for first responders. Uh, throughout the pandemic, they came to work every single day. Uh, in, in the city of Ellsworth, there were many of our departments that we were able to, you know, send home for weeks on end. Uh, our city hall was closed. Uh, other departments worked one week on, one week off so that they limited their exposure. But law enforcement, fire, EMS, you know, they were there every single day, dispatchers. They were, they answered the calls, uh, they responded to emergencies throughout, you know, throughout the city of Ellsworth, uh, and actually into the county in many instances for, for backup and support of Hancock County. And so those are the individuals who, you know, put the, put themselves in harm's way throughout the entirety of the pandemic without any hesitation, without any reservation. And so for me, those are the folks who are most deserved of hazard duty pay.
What I'm, police, fire, dispatch. Correct, that group of people. Yep. Do you have some idea how many people we're talking about there?
Well, for my department, you're talking roughly 20 PD. And, you know, and again, depending on the parameters of the, you know, hours worked and so forth, um, somewhere around 20 law enforcement, three dispatch and 13 fire. So you're talking, what's that, 33, 36 people, employees?
38 to 40. And, Mr. Lasard, you're.
Twenty-five. I'm adding in my head, yes.
Both. For police, fire and dispatch in Bucksport?
So the magnitude of this is actually much bigger than the state.
Yeah, it's even bigger than the statistics online show because Ellsworth showed 15 full and three part time police officers.
We only have one part time and we have 20, uh, excuse me, 19 small.
19 small, yeah, so.
But not against them, but some of all of those would be eligible because I have a couple vacancies and, you know, not everyone's worked the entire, you know. But again, applying the same parameters that have been, you know, put on the county employees could very easily be done for us as well.
So, so for me, I'm going to be frank, for me, I was against this proposal because of just what's happened right here. But I supported it because there, you know, the county, you know, the county is, is out of sync with what I'm seeing other communities pay. And I found, I saw this as a way to start to equalize that. Uh, I know, Mr. Lasard, you're questioning whether that's an approved, uh, way of doing it. That's, that's a valid point, but that's why I support it. I think that, and I thought it was a way to get there without being on your backs, the community's backs. But I guess that, I was wrong, that's a can of worms. Um, and, you know, just doing quick numbers, I know we could sit here and, you know, have every community come in and, you know, we've got 25, we've got 40, but just some quick math, it's going to be a huge number and therefore make it unattainable. That's my gut feel, even at 1,000 or 2,000. So my question is, are you advocating that we do? You know, this is you speaking, I understand that it's not even your communities because it doesn't sound like your communities have, have taken action on it because you don't have your money. So is your gut feeling that you'd rather see us do nothing than do this, given what I've just stated?
I, I would reiterate the statement I made earlier that I believe this is a valuable expenditure of this, of these funds. What I believe is the dollar amount that the county has set for their employees is a precedent that, as Ms. Lasard stated, municipalities cannot maintain because we have far fewer funds. And so if the county is going to move forward with only county employees for hazard duty pay, I would ask that you set that at an attainable amount for municipalities so as to not have this inequitable treatment between our first responders and between our law enforcement and fire personnel throughout the state, throughout the county.
I agree with you and I agree with you last time. What is that amount?
Well, I, I mean.
Well, and for us who don't even have our money yet, that it's difficult to know because as, um, well, as you said, is that, is that, I, I guess my question is, why is, why does this have to happen now? Why is it not possible to wait and see where this goes a bit more before we start handing out hazard pay to your first responders in what could be considered the ongoing and, um.
Well, I can tell you from my point of view, why now is that there are, it's a 155 page document that's trying to tell us how to spend this money. And for, for me, 154 of it's useless, I can understand it. But what I can understand is I can understand nonprofits getting it, that's clear in there. I can understand hazard pay, that's clear that's in there. And so these are issues that we can start now implementing because we feel very assured that it's going to be an appropriate use of the funds. And there are other things we'd like to do with it. I'm not, you know, I'm not sure where we, where, I, I need more assurance that, that those, that can happen. So when you ask why now, well, because we know now these apply. And the hazard pay that we're giving now is for employees that worked 15 months a year and a half ago. And so it's not like, why we were making them wait three years? Let's, I mean, we know it's appropriate. And so let's, let's do it now and compensate them and benefit them for the time that they put in during the, the COVID virus, that 15 month period.
Well, so I, I agree. I mean, that's the, what the one point of trying to get some of the money out is, it's supposed to be a COVID relief. So if we wait until, or until we know where every last penny is going to go, we'll be hopefully far enough, uh, on the other, on the other side of the pandemic that we didn't help people during the middle of the pandemic. So to me, that's a little bit why we don't want to wait too long on some of this because the idea is like, we're supposed to get the money out to help people during the pandemic. So that's to me why we don't want to wait too long, starting to put out some money to the communities because they were just sitting, sitting on money in the bank. And now trying to, trying to make a difference. That's why I did, uh, giving the 300,000 to, to grants, you know, just to get out there. You know, to generate profits.
Well, for me, you asked what the hurry is, and you're right, there's, there's two years to do this. But again, one of my reasons was to take care of some of this unequaledness that's, that's happening, you know, the Hancock County's communities and county employees. So if we, if we don't do that with this money, then we still have to deal with that, some of those differences through our budget, which directly affects you because you fund our budget. So that's the reason for me that it's somewhat time sensitive. If you feel that, that that's not important, I'd love to know it because that might change my mind. You know, because to be honest, it's going to have to be dealt with at some point. The question for me, is this a come out of ARPA money or is it come out of your pockets?
Interestingly enough, we redid our wage scales for law enforcement a year, two years ago. And we based them on obtaining county wages because county is the biggest competitor for us for law enforcement. And we were not higher in wage scales than law enforcement for the county.
Yeah, I can't speak for Bucksport, but I can, I, I have looked into other communities and, you know, starting wise, there's some despair. I don't know Bucksport.
And I, my understanding was this was between union and non-union personnel who are not first responders, was why their other employees were all giving the equivalent of 2,500 dollars.
I don't think that's the case.
Well, I can tell you that, that there were a number of considerations that we had to make with regards to who got it and who didn't. And that was certainly one of them, that we were trying to avoid confrontation with the union over this, but that was not a driving force. You know, what we really wanted to do was, was to benefit those people who were, just like you said, our first responders, our on the front lines and whatnot. Trying to draw a line of where you stopped there is the same line we're trying to draw today with regards to who you people are suggesting that we benefit. Gentlemen, I'd like to suggest, not that we implement this, but that we simply look at a program from our ARP funds that says to the communities, we will match first responders for police, fire and dispatch, police, fire, dispatch and EMS on a two to one ratio to, to, uh, from the county for every one you put in. And tell us by a date certain, uh, by September 31st, how many people you're talking about and what, what level you're going to give them so that we can put a price tag on this and then decide whether or not we want to implement something like. I mean, we can talk about this all day. I think, I don't think anybody disagrees that there are a number of people out there who deserve the benefit. We just need to know, A, who are these people? B, to what extent are we going to, uh, is that going to cost? And then C, do we want to implement that and use that amount from the ARP fund? So I'm not suggesting that we do this. I'm simply saying that we start today gathering statistics on what it would cost for a two to one match for these first line responders. Glenn, Mr. Lasard, would, would, would that go to, uh, go towards what you're trying to accomplish with regards to hazard pay?
I, I would be happy to provide you with information on what that would look like for your consideration. That, that would be, uh.
Well, one other thing, we've got two communities, there's a lot of other communities. I see it almost as, as a waste of time because just in two communities, you, you start adding the numbers and it gets to be unattainable. So the question is, you know, if we do that, I'm not prepared to say two to one or anything at this point because it's a huge price tag. So if we're going to do that, we've got to reach out to every community, not just the ones who are here today.
And we would, and that, that would be my premise. And the reason I'm suggesting two to one because that is the.
Two to one.
The county providing $2 for every dollar the municipality puts in. I'm just saying that because now that's.
You should take your calculator out.
Well, if, if we use the figures online for full time police officers in Hancock County and in the, uh, P D Wolfley and Hackett and whatnot, that's $310,000. It's a $5,000 level. And what I'm suggesting is, and if Ms. Lasard's $1,000 first responders was generally accepted to all municipalities, then we're talking about 2,000 from us and not 5,000, which means that this 310,000 now is less than, than 200,000. So all I'm saying is that we're not committing ourselves to anything, but if we can give the municipalities some parameters on what we would contribute based upon what they contributed, I mean, if we only had a, a one to one, maybe they said, well, we're only putting 500, but if we can pick up 3,000 for a $1,000 investment, we'll, 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 1,000. So I'd like to give them parameters that they could help them establish how much money they want to put in, up to a certain amount.
I, I understand where you're going, I somewhat agree with it, but, uh, I'm not sure where you got the 310,000. Right here today, there's 65 people, that's only two communities. Right here today, there's sixty-five people. That's only two communities.
I'm talking about police, police, and I said the three ten, that's only police officers, one police officer in Hancock County, not including the sheriff's and the state police.
So I also just mentioned, you know, they're like some of the two largest communities in the county. So, um, yeah.
Well, you got some pretty good numbers off the island.
Yeah, I know, I know. I just, yeah, but let's keep in mind that you're talking also about the number of communities that have these firsts.
Well, police, fire, you know, just, I, I, I guess it's a worthwhile exercise, but I'm just trying, you know, just doing back-of-the-napkin numbers. I don't want to lead anybody on, but the numbers are, are big. If we want to go down that road, you're saying, you're saying that you want the counties, the counties to be equal to the, to the, to your municipalities. And you don't even know when you're going to get your money. And that sort of takes away some of, some of the purpose for me because I can't speak for anybody else of doing this in the first place. So again, that's going to be on your dime also.
Well, so two things. One thing, I think if, if the county sets parameters and sets a timetable, then it's up to the municipalities to meet that. And whether we have our funds or not, our councils, select, selectmen, whomever, whatever the form of government is in the different municipalities, can authorize funding. So if you set a, just for simplicity sake, if you set a drop dead date of December first for municipalities to submit this information, then I go to my council and I get it on the council agenda and I get permission from the council to authorize expenditure of a hundred, a thousand dollars per first responder for hazard duty ARPA funding. And then I provide that information to the commission. So I think you can place some onus of responsibility on the communities. And if there are communities out there who, for whatever reason, don't feel the need to, you know, to, to put the effort in for their employees, then, then that's on that individual community. Ms. Lassard and myself have, you know, we've communicated about this prior to today. I was at the last meeting. We're here today because we feel this is a valuable resource for us to tap into, to reward our, our employees, just the same way that the county is rewarding their employees. So you have to put the responsibility on the, on the municipality. If, if they want to participate and they want to put the effort in, then they're not here today. I don't know why, but you know, they, they may or may not see the value and may or may not have the interest to, to try.
The other thing for me is we're on one issue that, you know, the first issue that's come, you know, I'm wondering if this is going to continue throughout all of this. This, this is a huge can of worms.
Responsibility to sharing ten million dollars, it's going to be a big responsibility. That's why you run for office and that's why you do your job. It's going to be a pain in the neck, but that's the concept of the job. So I agree with, with the chair, because I've agreed from the very beginning that I think some kind of match or some kind of ratio. I don't think we necessarily need to, not wish to hold too much what it's going to be. Maybe one-to-one, maybe more. But I do think we have to have a serious breakdown from the towns what the numbers are going to be to see how it works, will it work, and how much can be treated. So.
We have another member of the public who is, is asking to be heard. Can you bring her up, Rebecca, or whoever that is? Is it Ms. Young?
Hi.
Ms. Laurel, you have, you have the floor?
Thank you. Um, let's see if I can make the video work. There we go. Hello. Um, my name is Shamaya. I live in Goldsboro. And I just wanted to support what Chief Moser said, that it's important that it be equitable. And also Ms. Lassard, that to me, it seems that it's really important that the county isn't dividing up the money to county employees and going above and beyond what the municipalities are able to do because proportionately, the municipalities are getting way, way less ARPA funding. And the other thing that I just wanted to say is that it would be really, I think it would be really good to have more community input about how the large scale of the funding is done. Like, would it work to have specifically a community meeting to discuss how should ten point six million dollars coming to the county be distributed? And how can we work together more? Like, some of the communities, it was in the paper yesterday, that some communities in Maine are specifically working together to say, how do we have the best long-term impact as a result of both the money coming into the municipalities and the county? And to think about it together. And so I'm really glad for this discussion today in this meeting. And I'm really hoping that you all might consider making some kind of a public hearing specifically to get more community input about how to use the ARPA money in the best way.
Thank you for your comments. And I will remind the public too, that there is an opportunity on a website in Monka to submit your, your comments, concerns, and suggestions on how to, how to do this. And, and we review that often and consider those, those comments.
So I guess, Mr. Chair, what is, I understand your suggestion, suggestion about reaching out to the community and that. I guess I support that. Are you saying put a hold on this?
I'm saying, no, we, we could. That's a discussion we can have here later. But what I'd like to see is-
Because that's what, that's what these folks are asking.
I know, but they're asking two things. And so I'm trying to address the first one. And that is, to what extent we want to use our ARP monies for hazardous pay for our communities? And so I'd like to know to what extent the communities want to weigh in and, and join us in, in showing their appreciation for, you know, for the hazard that their employees were in, and to what extent. So I would like to somehow get the word out to all our municipalities that we would like to have a list of, not specifically the people, but the positions that you are looking to provide hazardous pay to. And to what extent is the community willing to contribute to this hazard pay at the ratio of one of the municipal, municipal dollars to two of the county dollars? Get that information, as, as Chief said, by December first perhaps. Set down, weigh that out, see what that costs and see if that's something that is, is reasonable, that we could support and implement it.
Keep in mind, it doesn't, it has to be more than, I mean, that's what you're saying. It has to be more than just find out roles. We, you know, we have the head counts, right?
Yeah, that's what I mean. I'm just saying, we didn't need names though. No, we need the head count. That's what I'm saying. We need to know how many, the head count. In other words, the positions, in other words, if you have a community with police, fire, and EMS, and then how many, what's the head count for each category? And to what extent are you going to compensate, contribute towards this, this ratio of one to two, at what amount? So if they're going to contribute a thousand dollars, then we would contribute two. That would help us determine for this community what our contribution would amount to. And then add those communities all up and see what that amounts to in total. Is this something we want to do?
For me, if we're going to do that, we can't move ahead with this because we don't know what price tag it is all of a sudden. And one of their major points, specifically Mr. Moser's point, is we're creating, fuse his words, inequity between the county and potentially their communities. So if we're going to address that concern, we have to put a hold on this.
Listen, but, listen, wait a minute. These, if we go out to the communities and say, to what extent do you, the communities, want to contribute? Then there is going to be, and I don't like the word inequity, but there is going to be a disparity between one community and another based upon what the core amount from that community is going to be. So if Bucksport says we're going to do a thousand and Bar Harbor says we're going to do twenty-five hundred, then there is a disparity between those two communities based simply upon the core group, the core community's decision to pay more than another community. You know, a, a small town with Promscott might say, we want to give two hundred and fifty to our alignment. And so they're going to get a total of two-to-one, they're going to get seven hundred and fifty from us. And Bar Harbor's going to get seventy-five hundred. So there's going to be a disparity, no matter what happens, if we go and let the communities decide what the core, what the base amount's going to be. And this amount that we're appropriating for our employees is proportional to the amount of money that we received. It's unfortunate. I don't know what rocket scientist in, in Washington decided that we should have ten and, and the city of Ellsworth should only get seven hundred thousand. We got ten million, they got seven. I don't know who decided that, and I certainly don't agree with it. But that decision was made and our decision to pay five thousand for first line and twenty-five hundred for the second line employees was based upon that proportional amount of money that we received, and I still support that today.
Well, for me, again, my motivation was to take care of some other problems. As Ms. Lassard pointed out, that's probably, you know, chief questions, that, whether that's valid or not. Quite frankly, I had been. But, you know, so it sounds like we should take that issue out of here and deal with that issue separately.
What's that issue?
That issue is some of the, I hate that word, the inequity in, in, you know, pay between our, our communities. Again, that, that's, so if you're going to let me finish. So maybe we should strip that out of here, you know, and then wait on this because we are going to be creating the, we're going to be creating the exact problem that Mr. Moser's concerned about. And we're going to be doing it community by community by community. This can of worms is going to get worse, not, that's my fear. And I mean, we've been an hour on this. I, I, and, and these are just the managers for these communities. Wait till you get, you know, there's select boards and councils involved here. This is, this is, you know, to me, I'd like to see the communities agree amongst each other, then come here. Because we're going to be refereeing between communities. That's, so, so that's why I really, I don't know what to do with this. I, I, I agreed with this plan. I agreed what it was, you know, the reasoning for it. But the, the communities don't, or the two communities, or I should say the managers of those two communities don't. So I, I, it seems to me that we got to put this on hold, wait for them to come, you know, to come with us with some proposals or some ideas and deal with the issues that we were trying to, have this money take care of. It's going to cost them, but, you know, we can't continue to kick the can down the road on those issues. Do you know, I'm throwing a wrench in everything here, but I don't know how to get there.
So again, I want us to have the communities come together and get head count of what they want.
I, I see. I don't think, yeah, I don't think, Joe, that, that it's our onus to get them to come together. I think individually, we should-
Yeah, I kind of used, I think they're going to have to.
No, they can come to us individually and have this information all here because we've got thirty-three communities out there. And if twenty-five came with the information and the other eight didn't, that's, you know, it's not for us to, to make them all come here. I'm just saying that if you're interested and you'd like to participate in this two-for-one ratio on, on ARP hazard money, give us the information.
You don't think you're going to have Ellsworth saying Bucksport got more, Bar Harbor saying you gave them more than us?
Take it up. Listen, if, if Ellsworth, if Bucksport is unhappy with Ellsworth giving more money than Bucksport, take it up with Ellsworth. Don't take it up with us. I'm asking each community to tell us, what is your core amount of money that you want to provide hazard pay? That's your decision to make. Whatever that decision is, we'll match it two-to-one. And so it's not for us to tell Bar Harbor or Bucksport how much their base pay is. It's for you people to decide, make that decision. That will help us understand what our contribution is, and then we have to make a decision on whether or not we can afford it and want to, want to expend that amount of money.
I would just, I would just caution that, that your last statement, whether you want to expend that amount of money, but if you are expending hazard duty pay to your county employees, first responders, and then you turn around and say, after these municipalities provide you this information, then you turn around and say, well, no, I guess we don't really want to expend that amount of money on first responders. That, I mean, that's your inequity. And I know you don't like that word, but that's, for simple terms, that's really unfair. Because now you're saying to the first responders throughout this county that are serving citizens of this county, that the Hancock County Sheriff's Department has a service, that you're not important to us. We don't care about the service that you're providing to citizens of this county. So that would be, I, I would just really caution you, if you're going to go down that road, to then turn around and say, no, we're not going to do that, I think is, is even more detrimental than just now saying, no, we're only going to serve, we're only going to provide it for the, for our employees.
See, I'm sorry we went down this road at all because I don't like this kind of, you know, this kind of. I think that it's too bad that we did not deal with the problem that I was hoping to deal with through this money. I'm sorry I agreed to that because, and, and the reason I agreed to that was to, to not have you pay the nut. But really, with the statements you've made, I think that's what you want us to do because of some of these inequities. I'm going to use the word I don't like. But it, it's, I, I, I just don't see another way to, to solve this. I, I-
Scott, Anthony, he's got the next.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to try to avoid that, you know, that buzzword and, and sometimes I think that creates unnecessary tension. For me, as a coach, as a leader, when I hit these situations, the first thing I do is I go back, right back to my playbook and I say, what do I need to change to do? And unfortunately, there are some other cliches that could be used here, but I think we're really talking about how do we split this ten point six million dollar baby? That's what we're talking about. And I think that's what the commissioners, that's what the commissioners, sorry, pardon me. That's what the commissioners, I feel, need to do. And I think that's what you're asking. Because even if, no matter how you go down this road, that's been proposed, that can of worms opens up again at the end. At the end, when we start talking broadband or other projects, you gave town X five hundred thousand dollars for this. So this, does that, and that hasn't been discussed yet, does that come off the total? Is that separate from, that's different then? Because I didn't give, not every town has the fire and EMS and emergency services such as your two towns and having a really bird from the island yet. So my recommendation to the board is to go back and take a look at things and say, how do I, in the end, how do I want to split this baby up? How do we split the ten point six million? I'll get the figure in front of me. It could be as simple as this. Our group allocated the amounts to you. For the entire county, it comes just shy of five point five million, five point four six one. That's all a little more than half. The commission could look at it saying, we're going to match what Ibra sent you out of our ten point six million. What you decide to do with it, it's up to you, whether it's hazard pay, which is actually premium pay, whether it's broadband, whether it's water and sewer, whether it's COVID-related, because it all has to be kind of tied back to COVID. That's, I guess, my two cents. Back to you.
Glad you brought up the broadband part of it, because I was sitting at home last night. I do these discussions without, you know, read over suits, emails like four or five times. I, I did keep thinking about, well, what's going to happen, you know, the same thing's going to happen to a certain, to some degree when it comes to broadband. I mean, you know, I live right in Bucksport, right in town. Now, I don't have any issue with broadband. Could right on, right? But I don't live out back.
But I don't live out back where the broadband's bad. You have all kinds of towns in Hancock County where essentially you don't have any broadband at all, so much of the money isn't going to be spent at Bucksport, it's going to be spent far out, so is that inequity? No, it's going to be spent other places. There are sewer problems in one town, if there isn't another, we say, you know, well, we're going to contribute $150,000, $200,000 forever to a town to help with the sewer. Well, you didn't get $200,000 to our town for, I mean, it's, it's just, man, it's hard. That's why I said in the very beginning, when you're figuring out, are you going to levy up $10,000, $9,000, it's going to be hard.
I just wanted to real quickly just address the, the, the pay issue between municipal employees and, and county employees. One is, and I don't know that that inequity, inequity exists. I know in law enforcement, that gap has been closed significantly over the past few years, and in fact, deputies now are, are making more, if the same is not more than what my officers are making in the city of Ellsworth. So I know that, that gap has been closed. But this isn't really, and, and, and I'm, if, if it needs to be addressed through taxation, then it needs to be addressed through taxation, because these funds, one, they're not for that purpose, and two, at least in any literature that I've read, and two, it's a one-time thing. So you're not, you're not fixing an inequity, you're putting a mandate on it, maybe giving them a little bit, giving them a little bit extra in this week's paycheck, but six months from now, that equity's still going to exist. So this doesn't fix it. This fixes it maybe for the next several months, if those inequities actually exist amongst employees, we're doing the same job, but it doesn't fix it long-term. So the long-term answer is to fix those through taxation, not through ARPA funding, which is not going to be here forever.
I totally agree with you. And it fixes it for a year, and that's it. But to me, a year not addressed through taxation had some value for the communities. I guess it doesn't to the near two communities. But I, I agree with what our administrator just said. This is, this is just a discussion that's happened on one issue, this is going to happen on every single issue, and maybe we need to pull back, step back, and, you know, rethink how we're going to go about this, because so far, we've only talked about two, and there are going to be many more, and I, I just see the players changing.
You know, the issue's not going to be. It's easy for municipalities right now to say, you should be stepping back, you should be, should be pausing, you should be, you know, because they don't have their funds. Had they got their check when we got our check, do you, do you think municipalities would still be setting their twiddle, their fingers, trying to figure out what to do with it? Of course not. It's, it's when the money's in the bank, you're going to, you're going to see the municipalities then are going to jump on it, they're going to start making decisions, just like we did when we got our money.
No, it, it, it's sad that it happened like this, but that's not under our control, that's under the governor's.
Okay, gentlemen.
We need to figure out where to go with this.
Well, I'm sorry, it's quarter 10, we have, we have asked a group to show up here at 9 o'clock this morning to, on a better note, we have a, we have an executive session scheduled at 10 o'clock with our attorney, and so I cannot continue this discussion right now because we need to move on and then come back to this later. So I'm not sure how we do that, but I need, gentlemen, for us to move on to recognizing the recipients of our nonprofit grant program, okay?
What about tabling this to the?
I want to talk about this more. We have employees out there, whatnot, who we gave them this sense that at some point here soon, we were going to recognize their contributions, and so we still haven't talked about them. So anyways, I would like to put a pause on this agenda right now, I'd like to move back to recognizing those in attendance the other day who were recipients of our grant program. Is that okay? John? So I guess I'll see if there's a representative here from some of these groups. Is there somebody here from the Neighborhood House?
Where the knee?
And if you could come to Michael's room and tell us who you are.
And then do we want to take the, the action before we do the presentation, probably do the motion?
Motion to acknowledge?
Yeah.
Good, yes. Yep.
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you, I'm Anne Marie Hart, I'm Executive Director of the Neighborhood House, which is a nonprofit community center in Northeast Harbor, serve all ages.
So I'm going to move to acknowledge your award of, of revenue loss grant of 8, and our revenue loss grant to Neighborhood House Incorporated is the amount of 10,000, as awarded by the Grant Awards Committee.
Seconded. Discussion. Hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My sincere thank you.
Would you come forward yesterday with all the photo sessions? That is yours?
It's a well-worked, well-worked trip.
You're very, and just to, gentlemen?
You're cute all lined up like that. Said you're cute all lined up like that.
And rethink you, coming in. Is there somebody from the Elswood Snowmobile Club? Seeing no one, is there somebody here from Best Bright Cancer Research?
I'm Michael Reisman, Executive Director of the Best Bright Cancer Research Center. I serve hand contact in Washington counties and offer many services to cancer patients that are charged.
Okay, Michael, thank you.
So I'm going to move to acknowledge the award of an arm revenue loss grant to Betsy Wright Center in the amount of 6,000, is awarded by the Grant Awards Committee.
Seconded. Motion made, was seconded, any discussion? Hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's made. Michael, if you come forward. That is yours?
We need big jets.
Very good. Congratulations. Is there somebody here from the Grand?
Good morning. Well, we all sit together, though. Good morning, I'm Nick Turner, the Executive Director of the Grand, deeply grateful for this, and I'm deeply grateful how quickly you moved on it. Every time we get a little bit more money, we gain another day. The Grand is a, you know, I think, very important part of the community for the whole county, and within a week of this, we lost 100% of our revenue. So, I mean, there was no gray area, it was just gone, and through the great, the generosity of the county and the city, and donors, and grant programs and all that, my God, we're still here. So I'm still here. That's right. I'm not sure we're happy about that, but thank you very much for that.
You're welcome, Nick.
Yeah.
So I'm going to move to acknowledge the award of an arm revenue loss grant to the Grand in the amount of $10,000, as awarded by the Grant Awards Committee.
Seconded. Discussion. Hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Chair?
Good morning, good to see you. Happy to be here. I'm right up the aisle, snowball right up there. Actually, I'm Mr. Uglar.
Discussion. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there somebody here from the Northeast Historic Film?
Well, I'm here at Jane Dunell's of the Alamo Theater, which is a big part of, people know the Alamo or they know where it starts.
I'm David Weiss, the Executive Director of the Woodbine Cemetery.
Welcome, thank you for coming in.
It's been a hugely important thing, and we really appreciate it. It's been hard to have it see us close, pandemic's been.
Very trying.
It is helps.
So I'm going to move to acknowledge your award of an arm revenue loss grant to Northeast Historic Film in the amount of $10,000, as awarded by the Grant Awards Committee.
Seconded. Discussion. Hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
It might go funny. We, we, it's like a, it's really separated. You've got a snow away to two people. Okay, folks, congratulations. Thank you. Thanks again, folks. Sorry. Is there somebody here from Woodbine Cemetery? We had Mark here for a while. How about Penobscot Historical Society? Okay, we still need to make those acknowledgements, so, so we could have an acknowledgement on the.
About the, you know, we'll take them all separately.
Right.
Okay. Move to acknowledge your award of an arm revenue loss grant to the Elswood Snowmobile Club in the amount of $3,688, is awarded by the Grant Awards Committee.
Seconded. Discussion. Hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Woodbine, move to acknowledge the, the award of an arm, excuse me, a revenue loss grant to Woodbine Cemetery in the amount of $9,308, is awarded by the Grant Awards Committee.
Seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Penobscot, Penobscot Historical Society, move to acknowledge your award of an arm revenue loss grant to Penobscot Historical Society in the amount of $4,969, as awarded by the Grant Awards Committee.
Seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Gentlemen, that concludes today's acknowledgements, I will let the public know that to date, we have given them almost $74,000 in grant monies to nonprofits with their loss. So I'm going to, we have an executive session at 10, I'm going to take a quick break, and I'm going to come back at 10, we'll do an executive session to talk to our attorney. I'm going to call us back into session in four minutes, we have the executive session, but before that, whatnot, the sheriff is back and put the results of our bids this morning for those used cruisers. Sheriff, what'd you find out?
I found out that the two high bids were from the same person, and I called him, and he was shocked, and he had both of them, and he had checked with his dad, and his dad said, no. So, so they refused both of those. Traditionally, it's the white guy to check, but this time, it's, he had to check with dad, and it says, no. It was fun while it lasted.
Did I miss something? What did you, what did you say? All right, no more. So the results are now.
On that note, the same person was the second high bidder on both of those vehicles, and I contacted him, he's happy, he said, it's nice, I can drive one, and my girlfriend can drive one, so they're going to have matching cars. The high bid for unit 16 was from Henry Bauer in Trenton, and that was for $5,100. And the second one for unit number 15, also for Henry Bauer, was for $4,100. And when I spoke to him, I told him he can come in either tomorrow, Friday, with cash or a bank check, and we have the titles ready for him, he's going to have to register them in showing terms before he drives them off.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
So I'm going to move to sell unit 15 and unit 16 to Henry Bauer for $4,100, for 15, $5,100, for 16, and acknowledge that he was the highest bidder.
Seconded. Motion made, seconded, any discussion? The sheriff's going to need the titles, Rebecca, so he can get those, Patrice got those?
Yeah, I'll ask her to grab them.
Yep, so the titles will be available since you want them, Scott.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do we have Ed on yet, too? I thought, I thought, Rebecca, that we had to set up so that it wouldn't dump the out every, whatever.
Oh, we did, I thought we did, did it not?
I saw it, I saw it.
Well, now the password to correct.
And Henry Bauer was a friend, right?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
ABGABs.
It is.
Drew Pat.
Yeah, Scott, I mean, we're going to take some time with the budget, but a lot of this is.
We will.
Yeah, we should be able to win all. Depends, we've got to go back to this hazard day issue.
You want to take that up again today?
Got to. On the agenda, we've got to make some decision on. We're going to. Yeah, we have to take it up again. Who wants the checks? Who's got?
Yeah.
This is the example for us, Rebecca, today. It's unfortunate that we had these people come in at nine o'clock and set up a party. But I don't, maybe they found me in the scene.
I didn't.
They, yeah.
They were asking.
Well, they need new hobbies.
Interestingly enough, as he represents in Woodbine, he's also City Council. He left sometime.
He left when I came in. I made him at the door.
Yeah. Yeah, he came and left and then came and left.
I mean, I don't know how we do it, Rebecca. Somehow we have to bounce back and get these people.
Get them back in.
No, no, no. No, in other situations.
I see.
Okay, so we're waiting on. We're waiting for Ed Vera to come on Zoom so we can run the executive session.
Can you just announce to those attending Zoom that when, just before we go into executive session, they could remove themselves from the meeting? That would be best rather than me.
If they don't have the ability to.
We can remove them.
They may have to. I mean, I see. They're open. I mean, I see that Scott on the screen.
Yeah, my computer's up.
I can have Michelle shut it down.
I can put you, I'll put you in the way.
Thank you.
We've been on before.
So can you send the text?
I just did.
You did. Well, we actually lost 10 grands. Kid not buying, didn't he give him $10,000?
10 for one and 9 for another one.
We actually lost $9,000 in the update.
Almost 10. Because we're 9,200. These two now, maybe like 19 grand. When I first heard those bids, that and all that.
I saw the look on your face when I read $10,000. Like this guy didn't really know what he did.
Yeah. Apparently his dad didn't.
So when you submit a bid, you're not bound to.
And we're not bound to accept them. We can reject or accept any and all bids and.
See, until we require a deposit as to when you reject, the way you said, I'm not coming in, we can do.
You know, easily. Can I come in and bring a personal check? No, you can't.
Yeah, usually when you go to an auction, you have to bring a sizable check.
Are you serious? It's larger.
Well, we've got the sheriff's auction coming up soon. That one in Barham, that property down there.
You think they're going to go?
It's a indication that it is.
What is that?
Well, this is a, it's an house.
It's a hospital.
Who was the defendant?
I can't think of that name. $9 million piece property.
You know it.
Yeah, you're right.
Tweezing.
Tweezing. Huh? Tweezing? Yeah, tweezing. James Tweezing?
Yeah, I know. So I guess I missed that, huh?
Well, you had a beautiful home. It had, no, it's not in foreclosure. The sheriff said to sell it. Value 2 mil.
1.9.
The sheriff's office?
Well, the sheriff said.
We conduct the auction.
For foreclosure sale.
So, huh, I never knew how that worked.
That's happened very often.
As you said, you only had a couple, right? Over the years, Bill?
I said three or four. Is the bank the plaintiff?
Yes.
The bank?
Yeah.
And I don't understand enough about it, no. But if bids add substantial for bank, would you outbid them and take it? So.
Banks can end up with a bidding. But they have a year according to all this instructed a lot of the rest to recover, make or recover that. We take that.
That makes it tough because you could get it for a million and a half or you can't do this in a year because you don't want to start investing and move into it. The guy can recover his loss within a year. Okay, Mr. Timmy.
Yeah, we're going to sell. Sure is. So we get back to our stuff.
He sent the message, please wait for the host to start the meeting. But you just sent him another.
Well, I sent him the, asked him to go through the website.
Yeah.
If all the counties decided to take the yard, Mike, there was some that were questioning it, right?
Right.
But all.
Fine, I know they all took it.
Okay, we are still in session. And we'll be joined now by our attorney, Ed Vera. Good morning, Ed.
Good morning.
What about all those people?
Well, we have not an executive session. Ed, as you know.
I'm back.
Okay, as you know, we took off the agenda deliberations on the Norton case that was remanded back to us and whatnot. And my own comment is that I was disappointed that we didn't have some discussion and get a better understanding of appraisals. And I'm still concerned that at some point, I'd like to hear some discussion in some form that helps us understand how critical plaintiffs, the applicant's appraisals should be considered by us. So no one did this morning, but be prepared, maybe something that at some point we're going to be asking you to assist us with. So.
Sure.
At this time, though, we have an employee matter that we need to go into executive session.
Did you want to ask?
As soon as we do, as soon as we through that motion.
Okay. I'm going to move to go in executive session as permitted by one MRSA 40568. Seek advice from our attorney regarding an employment matter.
Seconded. Discussion. Hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to wait. The session, folks, I'd ask that those people not involved in this session, whatnot, we're asking to do withdraw. Rebecca, withdraw from the Zoom portion of the meeting.
They can always come back in later and I'll let them in.
Appears that everybody's up now, Rebecca.